I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and to the Constitution of the United States.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, point of privilege?
Please.
I'd like to ask County Surveyor Jerry Brundt and my father to lead us into invocation, please. That's you, Dad.
Sure, please, please.
He caught me off guard and I don't hear very well, so I had to ask Marshall what he said. Please join me as I pray. Father God, we're thankful for the blessings of this day and the great privilege of living in this great country and state and community of Rockport-Fulton. And Lord, we've been blessed for so many years with leadership in this great city of Rockport and we just pray, a special prayer, on each and every one of these council men and women who diligently serve to make this a safer, better community for us all. And we just pray your blessing on them, that you'll go before them and make straight their path to deal with the issues that all cities have to deal with. And we're going to praise you in advance for what you're going to accomplish through these men and women. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd also like to take a point of personal privilege. Mayor Pro Tem Via and I would like to take a moment of silence for the kids and the tragedy and the upheaval today. Thank you. I know we're all praying for that community and those families. Item three, presentation, Texas Municipal League Leadership Academy, Councilmember Katie Jackson. This is a... Ms. Jackson?
Yes, of course.
This is a real pleasure to present this award. This is a two-day, it's over a two-month period?
Five days over two months.
Five days over two months. Held in... It's usually in Round Rock.
It was in Round Rock.
Well, why don't you explain?
The Texas Leadership Academy is a five-day class done over a two-month period. You learn about city leadership, skills you can bring back to your city, and all those other fun leadership things. It was held in Round Rock. It was a lot of fun. I learned a lot.
Thank you. Now we get to the fun stuff. Item number four, presentation of certificate of election to newly-elected official for Ward Two. So that would be Danielle Hale. Family can come up as well. Yeah, it's a real pleasure to present this certificate of election, City of Rockport. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is to certify that Danielle Hale, who's duly-elected councilmember, Ward Two, of the City of Rockport, Texas pursuant to the City of Rockport Resolution Number 2022-11, canceling the unopposed election that was scheduled to be held on May 7, 2022. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto signed my name and caused a seal of Rockport to be affixed this 24th day of May, 2022. This is for you. And now the fun part, oath of office. Ready? Repeat after me. I, Danielle Hale...
I, Danielle Hale.
It's her, not me. Do solemnly swear, or affirm...
Do solemnly.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the City Council.
That I will faithfully...
Will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the City Council.
Faithfully execute the duties of the office of the City Council.
Member Ward Two of the City of Rockport...
City of Rockport.
Of the State of Texas...
State of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability...
And do the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Protect, defend.
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
Amen.
Thank you. And now we get to do this with our veteran again.
Danielle.
You can't leave.
Can't run away yet.
Now, this is our now-veteran councilman. Yeah, y'all join her, please. Certificate of election, City of Rockport, Texas. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is to certify that Andrea Hatman was duly-elected councilmember, Ward Four, of the City of Rockport, Texas pursuant to the City of Rockport Resolution Number 2022-11, canceling the unopposed election that was scheduled to be held on May 7, 2022. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto signed my name and caused a seal of Rockport to be affixed this 24th day of May, 2022. On to item number seven, administration of bill. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas. Aye.
Aye. Andrea Hatman.
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the office of the City Council.
Of the office of the City Council.
Member Ward Four.
Member Ward Four.
Of the City of Rockport.
Of the City of Rockport.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will do to the best of my ability...
And will do to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Now, agenda item number eight. This is the certificate of election. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is to certify that a general election is held on May 7, 2022. All Timothy Tim Jarrow was duly-elected mayor of the City of Rockport, Texas. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto signed my name and caused a seal of Rockport to be affixed this 24th day of May, 2022. I think he does. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute...
The duties of the office of mayor...
The duties of the office of mayor.
Of the City of Rockport...
The City of Rockport.
Of the State of Texas...
State of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability...
And will do the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution...
Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mayors, passed in new. May I have a point of privilege, please?
Stop the hints.
I'd like to invite former councilmember JD Via up to come give some closing remarks, please, and I really appreciate his service to the community.
You want this one? You want this one? Ready?
Aye.
Oh, that.
Senior, uh... I never thought... I think I'm... Not taking a stand on the reason that more than one person... Still running a day... Still running a day, Mr. ... Thank you. You got it. Maybe you've done a great job. I didn't... Oh, I'm doing it. Well, yeah, the... George Bush press party, the Republican Party, those those secretary guys. Yeah, but I did it, I stayed on. And I'm glad to see you rock for getting for five years, ten years, and it's great. Facing, um... There's a lot more things I want to say, but I want to close with one thing. One thing that always has been one of the most memorable time in the government. Oh, sorry. That's the most memorable time, David, my guy, it's all in. And then you can barely see Lexi in the back, she was only eight years old there. Lexi stood up, she was tall now. Thank you very much, thank you, Rockport.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one more point of privilege.
I got him.
I want to thank the mayor before he comes around to say a few words. I have had the privilege of working with JD and with Pat for years and with previous mayors, mayor pro temps, and councilpeople, but all of them have been dedicated, hardworking people that cared about our city. And these two are just fine examples of those. I appreciate knowing them and working with them and pray that God will just bless them every day of their life now. Pat?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks to everyone. It was a real privilege to serve the city as long as I did. I apologize for the ten declared disasters we've had since Harvey, county Harvey, but hopefully we're done with those. And it's been a real privilege serving with this council and it's really, really a good feeling to know that we're leaving it in good hands. We've got competent, dedicated, capable people that'll keep moving the city forward. Thanks to y'all.
Thank you.
And thanks to the great staff, a lot of support all the way along. I'm not going to say you made me look good, but if I did look good, it's because of y'all. Thank you so much.
Did you see it's a...
You can't break it.
Probably been great, you know, it's a... I promise you, it's almost like... Don't move ever. Good night, I'll move it. Got the city seal on.
Your services.
Yeah, by name, thanks.
All right, we're down to item 11 on the agenda, which is deliberate and act on election of council.
Mayor, sorry.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Item two.
Okay. Okay, I thought we just did that. Item 10, recognition of Mayor Patrick Arrioz and councilmember Ward Two JD Via for their service and dedication to the citizens of Rockport.
Thank you.
Guys, come on back up.
That's reasonable.
Just standing in front of everybody to do this. Why don't you open the bag first?
I got it backwards.
Hold on. Don't see why they're all the back.
And what it says is, "With appreciation for nine years of dedicated service through calm and storms." Get after it. Let's see your unwrapping skills.
Ah!
So it is just the sign, "The street may come later."
So can I enter Matt, Mayor, real quick? We'll clean up.
All right, thank you. All right, what I read a little while ago, number 11, deliberate and act on election of council of mayor pro tem.
Mayor, I nominate Councilwoman Andrea Hatman from Ward Four for mayor pro tem.
Second.
Any other nomination? Your vote, Ward One. Ward Two? Ward Three?
Aye.
Ward Four? Mayor, aye. Congratulations. All right, citizens are to be heard. I practiced reading these things because it's important you get all the words right. So I have read this about 47 times before today, so if I get stuck on it, well, give me a minute. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from this audience, from persons who have signed speaker's card located at the table at the back of the training room in the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins. All written comments received by 4:00 on the day of, or 11:00 on the day of the meeting, on any subject matter that is not on the agenda, it will be read and summarized in the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take any action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace are as prohibited by law, shall be called for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. Do we have any citizens to be heard? Do we have any cards, Teresa? There are none, that being the case. Next item, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there any desire to remove anything from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it reads.
Have a motion and second. Any questions? Ward One?
Aye.
Ward Two?
Aye.
Ward Three?
Aye.
Ward Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Regular agenda, number 16, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance granting conditional use permit for 14 additional RV spaces and to bring the existing RV park into zoning compliance for property located at 217 South Fulton Beach Road, also known as Fulton Bayview Edition, Block F, Lots 1, 2, and 3, and waterfront east of 1, 2, and 3. An uninvited interest in waterfront east of Fulton Avenue and Beacon RV Park Marina Subdivision, Lot 1R, 2R, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas. Subject to be compliant with the conditions stated within the ordinance as well as those stipulated in City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Good evening, council. I'm Carrie Dietrich, community planner. This request for a cup is for Beacon RV Park. They're an existing park that was in existence when annexed. They're asking to add 14 spaces in the vacant area to complete the park. I will note that it is three and a half acres. It is not four acres, however, it was in existence before that rule was made. There are seven letters in favor and two against, and I believe Ms. Bertha is here if you have questions. The owner is here if you have questions.
Okay. Have any questions? Anything you would like to add?
No, I don't have any question.
Anyone else in attendance who wanted to address this item? I don't have any card showing that. Teresa, is there anything? Okay. Read for action. What is the...
This is the first reading.
First reading, okay. It's proving a first reading, this ordinance is read. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve item 16 is read.
Further discussion? No. Ward One? Ward Two?
Aye.
Ward Three?
Aye.
Ward Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number 17, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance granting conditional use permit for 78 additional RV spaces and to bring the existing RV park into zoning compliance located at 1222 Highway 35 South, also known as S-1950 Forest Oaks, Block 1, Lots 1 and 2, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas. Subject to compliance with the conditions stated within the ordinance as well as those stipulated in the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Yes. Thank you, council. This request for a cup is for Ancient Oaks RV Park on 35 South. It is an existing park. They want to add 78 spaces in two phases. And of course, the cup brings it into compliance with zoning rules. Ms. Jamies has been representing Mr. Buttram on this, but she did have an injury that's maybe why she's not here. She had injured her foot last week. And if you have any questions, I can answer most of them.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council?
There was a question who asked about the tree survey, and they will have to submit all that when they submit their plans for the actual extension of the park. They will have to submit a tree survey and be approved for what they're going to do. But they have, they've stated they're not removing any of the trees. They're going to work around them. Yes, there's some big...
That was my understanding in their B and Z, that they weren't going to work as hard as they can to save all the trees there. It's called Ancient Oaks for a reason.
Right.
And so they were going to save as many trees... And so they were going to save as many trees because they know that that's an amenity to that park.
Exactly.
Okay. Further questions from council? Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve item 17. It's presented. Aye.
Motion passed. I hadn't yet. Ward 1?
Aye.
Ward 2?
Aye.
Ward 3?
Aye.
Ward 4? Mayor, aye. Getting ahead of myself there. All right. Item number 18, deliberate an act on first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 118 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Rockport, Texas, separating RV park regulations and manufactured home park regulations, revising non-conforming use regulations, and providing regulations for recreational vehicle parks, repealing all ordinances to the extent that they are in conflict, and providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Who's got that?
Come on, Carrie. Well, while Carrie's walking up, this is one of the ordinances when I came on board that you wanted to make sure that we brought forward. And I'm happy to say that we believe we have an ordinance that the city can be proud of and that the RV council can agree to. We had a great meeting with them last week, and we'd like to move this ordinance forward with your approval and consideration. Carrie?
Yes, we've worked very diligently on this, and even so, there are two minor adjustments. Oh, have mercy, to the one that's in your packet, and I've given you each a copy. We needed to modify where we said the... Originally, we said the RVs had to be within three years of registration, which is silly. RV Park Council thought so too, so it's, they just have to be currently registered like everywhere else. And there was concern about that we had said in number 12 that the RVs had to be connected to city water and wastewater systems if available, and stopped there. So it was, is it assumed that if it's not available, they don't have to be connected to anything? No. So we added the verbiage just to make sure that if, if it was not available, they had to be on a permitted well system and approved onsite sewage facility. Just so there was no question about did they have to be hooked in to utilities or not. But that's the only two little minor changes to what you have.
Okay. So the RV people and the folks that were involved in this understood that the correction was made?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay. Very good. Other questions?
RV council is supportive of this ordinance?
Yes, sir. We met with them and went over all of that, and that was the two little things they wanted fixed, and then I neglected to do that on the copy I gave you.
No, I don't believe there are any cards, citizen...
I haven't seen them.
I do know there are members of the RV council here.
There are members here if you'd like to...
Yes, sir. Would you come up to the, would you come up to the microphone so we can get it recorded, please?
You're short-tempered. I'm telling you, you should be here. I'm Doug Webb. I'm the owner of RV, Fisher's Manor RV Park in Rockport, and I've been on the council since the very beginning, and we have had wars. And this is what I wanted to say, is that to Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. City Manager, he left, and city staff. Hopefully, this will be the last time we meet each other on this issue. I'd like to thank each of you for your time and diligence in this matter, and especially my congressman, Katie Jackson. We both compromised on this, where I think we have come up with a reasonable plan, and it's the city manager and Katie worked with us finally. That didn't happen before. Could have been settled a long time ago, but the city manager had an agenda, and it was not good for anyone except, I'm not sure who. I strongly suggest that you try to keep that man that just walked out of city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have commented question on this item? Council, questions or comments?
I just want to make a comment. This has been a long, arduous process. I have been intimately involved in it. I've met some fabulous RV park owners. I strongly suggest that if you don't like the way an RV park looks, get code enforcement involved. Most of the time, you'll find out they are not within the city limits. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments or questions, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a second. If there are no other questions, Ward 1?
Aye.
Ward 2?
Aye.
Ward 3?
Aye.
Ward 4? Mayor, aye.
Do we need it as presented? Is it okay with the addendums that were in the one that we saw versus the ones in the packet?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
That's okay. The way the motion was, okay. Okay.
Yeah, she brought them to your attention.
Thank you.
And this is the first reading?
That's right.
Item number 19 here, deliberate with Communications Board on a backup communications center to be located at the Rockport Service Center.
Mayor and council, just a history and recap. We have been working for about a year on the possibility of building a backup communications center to be located here at the city service center, and the amount involved has increased quite a bit over the last year due to increased cost of many things, which include the radio project is the largest cost, and then of course, labor. So the original plan where I was tasked by my former administrator, city manager Kevin Garude, was to put together a plan and attempt to, let's build a backup communications center here at the service center to duplicate and mirror what we currently have downtown at the Public Safety Center in the event that we have to evacuate, whether it be for a natural disaster or a gas situation, et cetera. So put that together, and with costs going so high, the last time we met, we discussed possibly narrowing down the positions to two positions instead of four. We work with a minimum of two positions currently at the communications center at the Public Safety Building. We manage three or four positions pretty often, and sometimes 24/7 during peak periods, 4th of July weekend, Memorial Day weekend coming up, large events or disasters that were working. However, we can manage with two communications and 911 consoles in the event that we were needing to vacate. The idea is to have a warm room, or I think a warm or a dark room, I've heard several different ways you call it, is to put together all the infrastructure that it would take to manage a 911 center with communications, with all first responders, law enforcement, EMS, and fire services within our community, City of Rockport, town of Fulton, and Aransas County, so that we would have clear communication with all of them. In the event that we had to leave downtown, we'd come here, turn everything on, and start working from there. So we did meet today. The Communications Board met again today, which is the third time we have met to discuss this, the backup communications center. There are some members of the Communications Board that have asked for the possibility of planning for a mobile trailer instead of a communications center, and Chief Stevens, Chief Stubbs, Sheriff Mills, they're here also if they would like to provide any input. However, the task that I received was to put together a backup communications center, a structure inside this building to possibly be as safe and sound as possible in the event that we have to evacuate for another disaster such as a hurricane or any other natural disaster where we would have to leave that building.
Okay. Chief Stevens, would you like to address this?
Some of the things that appreciate y'all's consideration for this, the, some of the questions that have come up is whether we look at a mobile solution versus a hardened solution here in the facility. From my perspective, I think it's two different platforms with two different purposes. I think what we're looking at for this project is true redundancy for communications versus a mobile command post. What we would build and what this project is, is not a command post. It's actually the dispatch center, the communications center, and something that could be rapidly stood up at a moment's notice. We all think about hurricanes, but for any number of things, were there a bomb threat at the Public Safety Center? Were there a fire or anything, anything acute or anything that we could plan for? Whatever it is that we have to vacate there, and if that building is destroyed and could take up to a year to rebuild whatever it is, something that is true redundancy, that is ready to go, that's flexed and exercised, I recommend once a month. It's not, it's not equipment that's put in and forgotten. It's equipment that they come over and they work out of, I would suggest, 24 or 48 hours a month, so that it's not foreign to them, that whenever we do have to use it, their folks, communications, don't come in and have to find their way around. They know how to use it because they use it every month. They're exercised in it, and they know how to use it. I think there's some value in looking at a mobile solution, but I think to build that, it's going to cost as much money or more, and it has ongoing costs that may not be present here. So I think it's something to consider, but again, we don't need to look at that as merely a, I don't know what to do.
You can probably hear me if I just do this, right? I don't think it's something to consider as a mobile command post. That's a different solution than a communications backup. What's in that communications backup is everything they have in the communications center. Where a mobile command post, and we talked about this today, and we do have some differing opinions on what we can look at. I think the decision point for the decision makers is, do we spend as much money or, I think we've got some figures that it could be more money to put it on wheels versus a solution that is in a hardened structure where they can work out long term until our primary center is rebuilt or whatever. I think there's value in having something that has bathroom facilities, a briefing room, things like that, that's close to the 4th of July, close to Oyster Fest, things like that. But that's not a communications solution. That's a command post. That's not what this project really is about. That's some of the things that we talk about. Again, Sheriff is here, the Fire Chief Lamar is here, Chief Doug's in the corner. So there's a lot of options we talked about and need work best, other figures for some of those costs. It's my, I think default to, if we're going to have redundancy, we need true redundancy that can be stood up immediately and at a moment's notice. That's what redundancy is for.
Sheriff Mills?
Bill Mills, Sheriff, Aransas County. We did meet this afternoon. Not sure, when we adjourned, my understanding that we were going to come to the council and say that there were some options that we wanted the opportunity to look at and get some figures. We did not get together till this afternoon, and it was my hope that we would have a workshop where the people that had the checkbooks with the county and the city, I think it's something that should be a shared expense. Nobody on the Communication Board is going to dispute the need for a backup center of some sort and capacity in, you know, we were here in August. But part of the discussion this afternoon centered around as well the fact that we don't control a couple of things that happened in Harvey, and we won't control them going forward. We don't know where the damage is going to be. We don't know that this building will fare any better than the Public Safety Center downtown. What knocked us out downtown was the loss of a tower. Within a few, I don't know, probably by the end of the year, we will have four radio antennas or towers in the county. The emergency corps has cleared their final hurdle. They will build one on the property at 188 and Bypass. You've got one in Holiday Beach, one downtown. You have the antenna on the tower here. As a reminder, we lost the tower in Fulton. Aransas Pass lost a tower during a storm, you know. The mobile dispatch trailer, we're not talking about a command center as much as we were talking about a dispatch trailer that could be utilized at any location. You know, after the storm, where's the tower up, and you could bring that to the location, wire it into wherever you're at, where you've got a tower still standing, and be at 175 or 190 feet and not at a 50-foot pole. We don't know that the antenna would survive here, but we wanted the opportunity to look at some figures and get some alternate costs and involve part of the Commissioners Court. I do believe that they would go the funding on this as well, as long as it's something that we can look at and decide what's the best use of all the dollars. We, for years, have been on the Joint Dispatch Center. I think somebody said 18 years. For that reason, I do believe it's something that, of this magnitude, that needs to be discussed with both, all three entities and see what Fulton's position as well is on the deal, and so there were options and discussions this afternoon. We did want the time to look at and actually come with some figures to y'all rather than the bolted facility that Motorola is proposing.
Okay. Appreciate it. Chief Suggs?
Well, it's a little odd that I'm up here too because I'm not one of the check riders, and the fire departments are not one of any of the check riders. I do believe that we need a backup dispatch center and not an incident command post, but a backup dispatch center. My questions are, are there other options, mobile being one of them? You know, hurricane is our biggest threat. I don't even know if this is possible to put a full dispatch center in a trailer. It'd be a question I'd like answered, but also a trailer would be a piece of equipment you could leave town with if we were getting a hurricane threat. You could bring it back in, so it should be ready to go. Again, buildings, we hope these buildings are here afterwards. As we know, after Harvey, I mean, it got bad, so we were lucky in some cases. And so really, that's it. And I just look at the cost of it, and I understand, and everybody's going to say, what's the life worth? Well, it's worth a lot more than $700,000 or $800,000. But I do look at that amount of money being put aside in the building or in a closet or wherever it's going to be, and even being utilized once a month. It just makes me question, is that really worth it? If it, it'd be much nicer if it was a piece of equipment that could be utilized more times during the year. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I did that. You have... I do, actually. And so we, I made a quick phone call today after our meeting to get a question regarding mobile, and I've actually been given kind of a wide flow, anywhere from about $750,000 to up to $1.2 million. I did find out today that the DPS, the new DPS communications trailer that came during Hurricane Harvey that worked communications for the two weeks they were on site, the new trailer they just built outfitted completely, and that includes a generator, air conditioning, computers, radio equipment and such, costs $1.2 million. So, excuse me, a trailer without some of the extra equipment and the extra radio equipment, at minimum, costs about $750,000. Again, that's outfitted for communications, for equipment, for internet, for satellite phone use, and different radios, different radios, systems and infrastructure. However, the backup comm center, again, going back to having a stationary, the cost, bringing down the two positions, brought the cost down from over $800,000 to under $800,775,000. And so, and I believe there's a copy that is included in the agenda packet. So the cost of the backup comm center being in a, in a structure like this, stationary here, and it's a 911 center, that's the thing too that I, that I'm trying to reiterate and remind is that we're talking about a PSAP, Public Safety Anturnpoint. It's a 911 center. Whereas putting a 911 center or PSAP into a mobile unit or a communications trailer, I believe that we would be talking about the same amount of cost. And fortunately, I also am waiting to meet with the Commission, State Commission on Emergency Communications in July at a workshop to ascertain whether or not the state will fund the 911 positions, which in my quote is about $40,000. So if they fund that, and fortunately for us, unfortunately, the history of Harvey, they feel like that, yes, we definitely could have and deserve to have an alternate PSAP if we need one. And so they're talking about funding two mobile positions. They would be mobile 911 positions. positions. Those could be used in another part of the region if need be. I have not seen the operation of one of those yet, but I will be finding out soon if the state will fund that as well, the 911 positions.
I know Sheriff Mills had something about the county and Fulton wanting to maybe help with the cost. I mean, that's sound enticing to us. I want to save money where we can. Do you see that being a possibility if we hold off and try to see if we can find the best way of using our cost here to get what we want at the end of that?
Sure. If there is funding available from the town of Fulton and from the county to assist with the cost, putting the project off for that reason, I'm not against that. I don't make that final decision, of course, but I'm not against that at all.
Do you see any kind of, do you see from this hearing that they would even open the possibility of that happening, besides Sheriff Mills saying that? I just don't want to hold off something that is not even a possibility.
Sheriff Mills probably could answer that for the county and Mayor Polk could probably answer that for the town of Fulton. I know that Chief Harrell was invited to come to the meeting tonight. He is the other member of the communications board. However, he had a prior appointment in Fulton, so he wasn't able to make it. So he did make the meeting today. The Sheriff Mills also did some homework to get information on the cost of mobile trailer, just kind of a basic, and Chief Stevens asked me to do the same thing, get information on a basic trailer. Basic structure, minimum is about $200,000. That doesn't include all the equipment that goes in it, like Sheriff Mills said today. Depends on what you want, depends on how big you want it. What kind of equipment do you want in it? You know, do you need facilities inside the trailer and such? So the cost can be a minimum of $200,000 all the way up. And again, we're talking about the mobile unit compared to having a stationary structured unit here at the City Service Center.
Does the question seem to be what the venue is going to be? We're going to have a mobile command post or a mobile communications center as opposed to a stationary in a fixed place? Is that the sticking place or does it seem to be?
I think actually the sticking point really, Sheriff, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that is, is everybody agrees that we need to have a redundant communications platform or solution. And that sticking point is stationary here in this building or mobile that we can take and perhaps use as a command post. I think everybody gets kind of in their mind whenever they say a mobile command post, but that's the $200,000 solution that doesn't have all the communication stuff. So that's why we want to be really clear on saying that that's not what we're looking at. I think the county would benefit from something like that, but that's another project. We're talking about a, something that has got all of the radio equipment, all of the communications, the ability to bring in 911 facilities for the communications folks, enough stations to dispatch calls, everything. Sheriff Mills accurately points out, one of the benefits of a mobile one is to be able to move it to wherever there is a tower still, an antenna still standing. There's other benefits though, or other drawbacks that it's, that's really more of a temporary solution. If we, if we're out of the Public Safety Center for, you know, nine, 10 months, that's, that's a, you know, that's, but what's the likelihood of that? Well, what's the unlikely of that? So there's pros and cons to it both ways. But Mayor, as you're pointing out, I think the real question here is, do we want a mobile communications platform or do we want a stationary one here in this building? But at the end of the day, the cost is about the same. I think perhaps a little more that we're finding out for the mobile solution. But the longer we wait, I think that, I think that price is kind of static, but the longer we wait, the price for construction inside the building is going to continue to creep up. So all in all, to me, it looks like the price is kind of around the same. The decision point, and this may be a question for, you know, for, is the question for the decision makers, which route do we go with that at the end of the day? Pros and cons both ways.
I know that on April 26th, we had a city council meeting and explicit instruction was given by the council for a workshop to happen and then be brought back to us. So what's being brought back to us is, we talked about it, we don't know, we don't have final this, we don't have any information, this hasn't been presented to anybody. Here, make a decision.
Counsel, I'm sorry. That would be on me. You guys asked for a group meeting with communications. This is that group meeting. You want a workshop, it's semantics, okay? We invited them, we notified them, we asked them to notify their entities, they represent those entities. So this is an opportunity to discuss the issue. And the real issue, as Chief has said, is what do you want? Do you want a mobile unit that will be a temporary unit or do you want a permanent backup? We've been out of the City Hall for five years. What do we want? A mobile dispatch facility will not last five years. If you want a permanent backup, then this is the route to go. If you're okay with a temporary backup, then direct us in a different direction. You wisely identified the money to do this. Fortunately, the costs have gone up and we've moved from four to two seats, but that's what you can afford with the monies we've set aside. If the other entities want to participate, then I encourage them to participate.
Yes.
One, I want to, I want to thank you, Lee, for bringing this item forward. I'm proud to be in a community that wants to invest in public safety and communications. As you well know, 20 years ago, I cut my teeth in 911, so this is near and dear to me. It also is heartbreaking for me to sit here and want to take money away from something that on the surface appears to be a very worthy cause. This cost is a lot. I think that we can invest some of this cost into communications redundancy and resiliency in a way that makes a little bit more sense that we have some daily use out of. Now, I will go on record, I do not want a trailer. A mobile unit is not what this community needs. You have to be able to cover it, you have to maintain it, you have to have a prime mover. We have trailers all over this region doing almost the same function that we're talking about. I, it's just, it's not a good use of our money. But that said, I, some of these costs, and I'm kind of looking down at you, Mike, you know, $100,000 for electrical grounding over here, $100,000 for network. Is there going to be additional benefit to this facility by investing in that infrastructure that, oh, by the way, also serves 911? Are we just going to stick this in a closet? So that's, that's kind of my first question.
There will be a benefit to this facility. When this facility was built, it was built with the intention of being a, the backup emergency operations center for Aransas County. It was my understanding when I first came to work here that there were going to be cables that would drop out of the ceilings in this room and then we would be able to set up the emergency operations center within this facility. That was never done and this facility has not been used in that capacity. By adding the upgraded electrical and everything else that's necessary to have a 911 answering service here within this facility will give us the ability, more ability, to use this as a backup emergency operations center. This is a hardened facility. You know, we did well in the storm, but that doesn't mean we're going to do well in the next one. I've got multiple years' experience working in the emergency services. I have built two different communications centers. One was for the city of Bryan only, the other one was a joint facility for Bryan and Brass County. And, you know, I'm a firm believer in making sure your dispatchers are well protected and taken care of.
So Mike, not to interrupt, back to the question. Is putting $100,000 in electrical grounding and $100,000 in network in this building going to give you a daily use, not an alternative OC, is it going to help this building?
It will give us, you know, power within the facility and the ability to hook more things up, so yes.
Okay, thank you. So the only other thing, Lee, I would just say, the consoles are cost. You have to have a facility that if you have a fire evacuation or a security threat today, you have to be able to pick up and walk out that door and be able to function. That's basics of business or continuity of operations, and I don't know that we could do that as seamlessly as we want to. So to me, that's, that's the first priority. A long-term solution to a hurricane or catastrophic to the Public Safety Center, I'm not saying I don't want to invest that money, but it just doesn't make as much sense to me when there are so many other redundancies and capabilities that exist out there to support a community that's catastrophic. We maybe didn't leverage as many resources as we could have, maybe there's a different way we could have done it. We can't backseat quarterback, you know, the cap four storm that happened five years ago. But Lee, I want to see something that's going to make you guys better today, even if it's replacing your existing consoles and moving the old equipment over here, paying $400,000, $300,000 for brand new equipment to stick in a closet. Doesn't make sense here, doesn't make sense anywhere. That's my last comment, sir.
Anyone else?
I don't want to be the old one to talk. No, I guess since this is a workshop, correct, right now versus in workshop mode. Okay, and we have, we have representatives from Commissioners Court and town of Fulton. Can, can we discuss that in, not in violation of any kind of, okay?
Discussion.
Okay. Do y'all feel that, that there could be participation from y'all's entities in, in this? I don't want you to speak for the whole, your whole court or council over there, but I mean, is this something we can support? I mean, obviously, we've already paid for it through tax notes, the City of Rock Board, citizens of Rockport have, but it's going to benefit the entire county, town of Fulton, the City of Rockport and the other entities that we dispatch for. But if we can get other participation, I mean, that's a cost savings to, to us somewhere we could put the tax notes, I believe we wrote it, in a way that we can use that money. We're a little more flexible with it. So that's all I would ask the Commissioners Court and town of Fulton. And obviously, the communications board, I guess, meeting this afternoon was not the best, best use of their time. Meeting this afternoon, they come to the council meeting, I would, I wished we had more of a direction from the communications board of, hey, this is how we want to move. This is, this is the direction we want to go to the decision makers so that, so that we have a better idea of which route they want to go. That's, I wish that was there. Still seems like there's a little bit of indecisiveness or maybe not indecisiveness, but some discussion going on in the communication board as to what they want. So, yes. I guess we just had a little more direction from the communications board and, and participation from the other entities.
It appears the issue to us, and this is just me speaking, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, what I am hearing is that a significant portion of the communications board feels that a mobile communications center is the answer to the question and the answer to the problem. There is a part of the board who believes that a setup in this facility of communications or emergency communications in case of a bad event is the solution to the problem. If we are not going to be able to resolve it by saying, for instance, would y'all be willing to forego a center in this building and have a mobile command post, with mobile communications center? Would that satisfy your needs? And if not, would you be willing to accept one that is set up in this building as a permanent backup communications center? And I realize that you can't speak for the folks that vote in your Commissioners Court and the city and town councils, but the question doesn't seem to be whether or not we will share the cost. It's a matter of whether we'll share the cost depending on what the venue is that the communications center will be in.
That's aptly put, Mayor, and I think that's what it boils down to, Councilman Burdrett, is there's, we disagree on the, on the best way to go. I lean towards having a permanent structure. I see value in the other side in a mobile unit. I just think the better solution is to have a permanent communications backup center, whether it be in this building or anywhere. I see that as a better solution. I'm sure we differ. He sees more use out of that, and I won't speak for you, but that's my take.
Okay.
I think the position of, part of the communication board and to your comment, Councilman Hale, was that there hasn't been, there's only been two options been put out here. The price in the project has already drawn up and built by Motorola and all we've done is scaled down. We haven't looked at and discussed any other possibilities, even outside of the trailer. It was, it was still kind of this afternoon, you know, we scaled it down from four to two consoles, but we haven't discussed any other options that might have been out there. I don't know that we've even looked at. As far as a workshop, we got an email Friday afternoon at nearly 5:00 that this was going on the agenda, and I don't know that that's time to even qualify for a quorum to appear here from the Commissioners Court. Commissioner Russo is here for the swearing-in ceremony as opposed, I think, to a discussion even about the communications dilemma or plan that we want to enact. So I mean, Carl Stubbs this afternoon brought up the point that we hadn't seen anything except the one proposal that was brought, and everything else was kind of spitballed out there. And I'd called and spoke to two different manufacturers who build all aluminum trailers, custom however you want them, but I'm sure there's other options and opportunities out there that probably should be reviewed and maybe by people, other people in the emergency management environment as well.
Thank you.
This may be back to Richard. Having sat through, I think, all of the meetings leading up to this as a spectator, my understanding during the initial proposals was that the city was not asking for a cost share. Councilman Burdrett brought it up as a, as a question, and so I think that needs to be clarified. I understand the city's willing to move forward to invest in our own resiliency and preparedness, and we weren't asking for a cost share. But if a cost share is on the table, then yes, we need to take in all of these other considerations, but we don't need approval from the communications board to do this. Am I, do I understand correctly?
That's correct.
Mayor, at this point, I mean, again, I don't agree on a mobile solution just because that's its own nightmare. I do agree on a permanent solution, but I don't agree with these costs. So I'm more than happy to make a motion to table this until another solution can come back. I don't want to vote it down outright in concept, but I'm willing to make the motion to table this for future meetings. It's postponed.
Yeah, next agenda.
That being the case, my question would be this. Can we say that by the next council meeting, and it's three weeks, we got a week off, it'll be the second Tuesday of June, that the communications board should get together once again and hash this through one more time and bring it back to us with a recommendation from those that are in the position to make a recommendation to this body? And we can look at it then, we can look at whatever might be something that should or could be considered and hasn't been, but if at the first council meeting in June, y'all could come back and make a firm recommendation to us that we can look at and make a decision on, I think that that would be to our advantage and to yours.
So Mayor, so that, and again, next agenda item, if you want to make that motion, that's what you want to do in the next one.
If you need it as a motion that we do this before the second meeting or the first meeting of next month, that is fine. It's a suggestion right now.
I have a suggestion, excuse me, Mayor. Lee, you said that there's going to be a workshop in July where we may find out if we may be able to get grant monies?
Yes, for the 911 positions.
Okay, is there a reason, is there a reason why you can't get an answer before that?
That's the next commission's, the state on emergency commission, that's their next meeting for decisions on our alternate PSAP as well as one down the road, Kingsville. They're doing the same in Kingsville.
Oh, so we've already submitted to the board.
They're doing a backup comm center, excuse me. I know that they're funding, they're needing more 911 positions in Kingsville, and it could be because of a new building for them. But the commission is meeting on July 16th. So next month in So next month, in June, June 14th, I'm going to present to the E CAC, which is the Emergency Communications Advisory Committee at the Coastal Bend Council of Governments to, to give the information regarding the request for the alternate P S A for the 911 positions. And then at that point, we, they make an addendum to the state commission, and then they ask that we present at the state commission. If, if, if I'm able to attend, that's the plan, and then also possibly representative or director of the Council of Governments, again, to the state commission. But that, that is, that is a, a good cost savings. I estimated, like I said, 40,000, was it 80,000 with four positions? So a quote was 40,000, and again, that's just for the 911 positions. But that includes the, the next gen 911, the mapping, the hardware, the software, everything, of course, associated with running, managing 911 database.
All right.
Thank you.
So this item is just a discussion item. The next item is to consider giving counsel, giving staff direction.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on item 19? Item number 20, deliberate an act on approval to purchase equipment and implementation services for the backup communications center for Motorola D I R contrast, D I, contract, D I R, T S O 4101, and Entrado 911 Life and Safety Solutions H G A C Contract E C 0720, authorizing the interim city manager to negotiate and execute all necessary documents.
I'll make a motion to propose, postpone this agenda item requesting staff to come back with a new proposal.
Do you want to add a time period or just with that?
I'm going to withdraw my motion from Ms. Jackson.
I would like to make a motion that this agenda item be postponed until after the July workshop meeting that Ms. Lee, Ms. Brown mentioned for possible grants.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, when does the Communications Board normally meet?
The Communications Board tries to meet quarterly or as often as needed. Any board member can request the meeting. Also, as a reminder, according to the inter-local agreement, there are five members on the Communications Board. The Communications Director, myself at this time, is an ex officio member of the board. So there are four voting members of the board. If the Communications Board can't reach a consensus, well, then it's asked that a representative of the City of Rockport and the county be involved to assist with the decision-making of that. So we, we did meet three times just as a reminder regarding the, the backup communications center, but the communication, I have, I presented what I was tasked to present and give the information, but, but I, I don't vote, just recommend and give the best that I have for the, you know, for the Communications Board.
So y'all, let's see, we wouldn't have another, there wouldn't be another Communication Board meeting before July, would not be scheduled.
Oh, sir, we can, we can schedule one. Yes, sir, we can, we can call one, we can schedule one anytime.
Okay.
Anytime all members are available to me, yes, sir.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second. Yes, my Pat.
I brought my checkbook. My name's Pat Russo. I live at 187 Heron Oaks in Rockport, Texas, and I signed a public participation form for this agenda item. I am very pleased with the thorough discussion that you all have given this, and I congratulate our new mayor and our new councilwoman on their insightful comments already, just hit the ground running. I don't know that I did that at my first Commissioners Court meeting. I became aware of this issue yesterday after Commissioners Court. I visited with Sheriff Mills and got a small background introduction to it. I think that the proposal, the tabling that you're looking at now and bringing it back after Ms. Brown returns from her possible getting some grant for the 911 console is a great idea. I do think it's important for the Communication Board to communicate, and what I have seen this evening seems to be one choice, and I think a couple of you have mentioned this, so one choice is the preferred choice, and then, well, there are a couple of other options, we really don't have any clear information about it. And it would be good, I think, for your own edification if you could see clearly what are some other options, and I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a motion.
We've got additional fuel tanks being brought in that will be delivered next week. We're already looking at our facilities, we're doing our homework, we're going to the exterior of our buildings to find out what do we have that can blow around, around all of our facilities? Waste water treatment plant, our Laurel Street facility, our Fleet facility, this facility. And now is the time, and the same thing at your homes. Now is the time to look at things like supplies to ensure that you have adequate food and/or water if you're going to stick with us, depending on the severity of the storm. Again, clean up and protect your facilities, think about your insurance. You know, we're covered by T M L insurance here in the city. We've got some experience with Hurricane Harvey that we learned from. And then our community needs to think about evacuation plans. And we, you know, we talk about all the time that this is not a community where we shelter in place. If we have an impending storm, we're going to encourage the majority of our citizens to leave our community and to have an evacuation plan. And the other thing that we need to think about now is recovery. We're still in recovery from Hurricane Harvey, and we learned so much, so thankful that we have an emergency management professional that has joined our staff, and I'll say she joined our staff as a council member. She's been an asset to Aransas County for as many years as I've been here, and prior to that, she lives in Aransas County, works outside of Aransas County, but she's a constant member in our emergency operations center with multiple years of experience, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with her. But we need to be prepared, and now is the time to prepare, not be complacent, and ensure that we have all of our stuff in order. And I'd ask anyone else would like to make comments as we talk about preparation. And again, now is the time to think about what we're going to do if we get impacted by a storm. We learn so much. I know that there's lots of folks that can talk about recovery and the, the wonderful process of recovery that we've all been going through for the last five years, and it's not over yet. And, you know, heaven forbid we get impacted by a storm this year. I think we'll do a better job in starting the recovery process a lot earlier. Anyone else?
All right, thank you. Anyone else got anything to say about hurricanes? I was here for one, I don't want another one. We can wait 30 years, I won't care. Anyone else?
Mayor, just that, we've got the, the Regional Hurricane Conference that I'm, I'm fortunate to be able to be a part of for the last dozen years or so, and it was great to see a lot of staff show up, a lot of participation from Rockport and Aransas County at that event, and that's very valuable. Continue just to challenge staff, you know, it's, it's important, the messaging we put to our community. There's numerous Facebook pages that you all are managing. Let's look at how we can blitz and consolidate that messaging and make sure that it's, it's focused as we go into hurricane season. Mr. Probst, I know you'll, you'll help along with that as well, but I challenge you to look deep in your departments. You have a lot of new folks, a lot of new faces, and although Harvey was five whole years ago, and it seemed like yesterday, we kind of forget our own lessons. So pull out those after actions, pull out those notes, say, you know, if it was a similar storm, what can we do to do better for our people, for our employees, but ultimately our citizens as well, so.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll have reports from council.
One. This is a big week for veterans. We have the Memorial Day observance on Monday at 10:00 a.m. in Veterans Park. Everyone, please attend. Excuse me, if you're interested to help us out, every year, the veterans in the county, we go to Lamar, Fulton, Rockport, and Little San Antonio cemeteries and place flags on veterans' graves. That'll be 8:00 Monday morning, meet at the Rockport Cemetery, and we'll disperse from there. Everybody is welcome to attend that, too. That, you learn a lot placing flags on, on graves. I think we have just under 600 veterans buried throughout the county. I think that's the number I know right now. So please come out, either help us with flags, come to the ceremony, or both. Everybody's welcome.
Thank you. Two.
Just want to thank everybody for the support as I've taken this adventure on, to come on as councilperson. Thank you, Mike, for the comments earlier. It's, yes, I am, you know, part of this community and have been actively involved and engaged in many different facets, so looking forward to the new, new way to, to guide and participate. I, I look forward to, there's a couple homeowners associations that are out there that are in our ward, or my ward, that I haven't had an opportunity to be overly engaged in yet, and I, I look forward to meeting those folks, but, you know, I try to make myself available and just look forward to servicing, servicing, or serving the residents of Ward 2 as well as the entire community.
Thank you.
Want to say we still have a lot of projects going on in Ward 3. Kid Lego Bridge is still moving along. We had a little hiccup with our, some drainage projects. We're going to work through that, but other than that, just, just take a deep breath. It's coming in the summertime, so we're going to get busy again. The, the town, city is going to get more populated, so it's really all help for Ward 3 and just prayers for, prayers be with the people of Uvalde and after them today.
Mayor, pro 10?
I second, you know, prayers to unfortunate event today. That's very sad. Also, you know, just projects in Ward 4 with the drainage pipe, we're still working forward on that, so we're still looking to get the design, and I, I know that's going to be here very, very soon, because I have all the trust into Mike over there. Also, I just wanted to mention with the hurricane, there is a hurricane breakfast at the, it's going to be at the Fulton Convention Center on June 1st. That will also go into further citizens to come and discuss what's going on and preparedness and how to get weather updates and any other information that's needed. I also want to say thank you for having, you know, vote of confidence, I know unopposed, but I am honored to be here. I love this community, and I look forward for the next two years in serving as best to my ability for everyone, so thank you very much.
I appreciate all of y'all being here this evening and all of those that had to leave. I mean, my son's left, a lot of people got bored with everything else that was going on, I guess, and decided it was time to get out of here, but I appreciate y'all being here. If we could, if we could interest people in our community into coming to these meetings like this, our meetings would be a lot more productive and things would work a lot better because we could see the people that we're serving and hear from you, and that means a lot. And that doesn't mean only people that support what we do, the people that have differences of opinion are welcome too, but it's wonderful to see this many people here, and those of you that stayed, there are more of you right now than usually come to the meetings. So we do appreciate that and look forward to serving y'all. And I appreciate everyone that, that supported me and the rest of us while all this has been going on. Thank you so very much. The city council will hold executive session pursuant to the provisions of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in section 551.074, personnel matters, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, and dismissal of a public officer or employee, review of city manager applications. And number 24, section 551.071, consultations with attorney seeking the advice of attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, and on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. One, illegal questions related to the applicability of certain development regulations within the extraterritorial jurisdiction, and two, Burnside Services, Inc. We're in executive session, and it is 7:58 p.m. and it is 7:58 p.m.
Sitting on the truck of a patrol car drinking a beer when he was...
All right. It is 9:32 and we have come back from executive's session. And we have no action to take. That being the case, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Back in.
Done. Thank y'all. It is 9:32. I said it once, but I didn't say it very loud. Appreciate you, you know, thanks.
Congratulations, Mayor. You made it through.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We made it through. Congratulations.